My name is Kim Wallace, Superintendent Fremont Unified. I've been in the district for six years now. And we've had this great partnership with the city for the space right directly behind Washington High here. The school district owned the property for quite a while. It was a student loan point and then it sold it to the city. And the city has now done a land transfer back to us in partnership also with East Bay Regional Park. So there's a lot of different components to this. But our goal tonight is just to show you what we have developed so far, get your input and feedback, and then continue on in the process. And so we're just gonna go ahead and turn it over to John Schlossberg, who's our Director of Facilities. And we'll go through the presentation and answer any questions you have that we can answer. And if we can't answer in the moment, we'll take the questions and then we'll make sure that we get back. All right, that's John.
You go, Kim Wallace. So I'd like to give a few introductions here for who is going to be, who's in the crowd anyway. You've just met or have seen Dr. Wallace, our Superintendent of Schools. Oh, I gotta do it. Sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay, this should work, right? No, it sounds green. Okay, is this working? Can I just?
What's that before says?
There it goes later.
Okay, so this is working now?
Yes.
Good. Okay, a few people from the city are here and one of which is Roger Ravenstadt over here. And then Suzanne Wolf, I saw her come in. She's back there. I didn't see any other, oh, nope. We got one school board member, Diane Jones, over here, trustee Jones. Tonight, we've got the architect who's working on the project along with the landscape architect. The architect is John Dipcek from QKA Architects. And Linda Gates is from Gates and Associates Landscape Architects. They've both done schools in the community. In foremost, the Brinkhurst Elementary School. That is also a multi-use project over in the warm springs area by the Tesla area. So today, Kim, I've already talked a little bit about the history of where we are, where we were, and how this is all coming about with the city. It is a city, it is a piece of property. We call it the Williams site. And it used to be a continuation high school. Ran for about five years in the 1980s. And then it got, the city bought it and then developed the adjacent Centerville Community Park, which is adjacent to this vacant land. And so in that, they never developed the other portion of the park, but it became available. The school district had had a lot of need for growing enrollments. The housing developments have been growing for a long time, very active. And so the district sought out new property. And this happened to be available. And in one sense, it is a free piece of property. However, there's always nothing exactly free. So let's see, it's a city, a district combined effort. We're going through a land conveyance agreement. There's stepping stones, there's milestones that we have to follow to an occupancy or build, you know, full build up of the park and the school in the fall semester of 2023. So we've been working on this. We've been working through the environmental process. We're significantly far on the path. We do that in the EDAHAR, which is an environmental impact report. And of course, a traffic study, that's part of it. And we can talk in more detail on that and what we're doing. And I'm sure there's concerns in the community on this as well. This is the second community meeting, nobody else. The first one is in the presentation, I believe it was in May of 2018. And so this is gonna basically show us, or show you where we are now and then where we're going. Let's see, we'll go into next steps, we'll talk about our schedule. And so one thing I didn't mention is that this is, we have translators here. And so if anybody needs assistance, we have Spanish and we also have Mandarin and we also have sign language. So if you do have, need assistance, the people that are the Spanish and the Mandarin, the translator, the translator, and, and you. Okay, I mentioned here Mandarin. Okay, so that being said, um, let's see. We, one thing that's not in the presentation, but in January of 2020, in the next few months, we anticipate the traffic impact assessment to be done. And so we will politicize that as well. We will have the dating features that are in this as well. You'll see a little bit of the drawings that are gonna be shown in here. Kind of show just in general how to approach this site. One, from a walking point of view and a driving point of view. Things that we want to encourage, things like traffic patterns that we want to disway. So with all that, I'm gonna turn it over to the architects and landscape architects. So John, here you go.
Thank you, John. Hello, everybody. Again, my name is John Dipcek. I'm an architect with Metropolis Park Architects. We're up in, we have an office in San Luis in Pleasanton. We've been working with the district on various projects for several years now. Most notably, the new elementary school, Lidle Brinkhurst Elementary, which is under construction. And then Gordon Junior High, which is in, the design phases right now. We're going to construction next year. So we're really working with the school district on a third project. And I will walk you through what we've done to date, where we are now, and one of our, some of our next steps on this project. With me is Linda Gates. Linda is the landscape architect that we've worked with frequently. She was the architect, the landscape architect that was hired by the city to design the park adjacent to the Lidle Brinkhurst Elementary School. As you'll see in the presentation, there's gonna be a lot of similarities between the two projects. So having a consistent group of team members makes a lot of sense for the school district in terms of design and expedite the project. So I imagine you all know where the property is. But just in case you don't, I'll walk you through. Here's the site. It's a 9.6 acre site. On the bordering the northern property, on this property line is Eggers Drive. Hastings is on the east side. On the bottom here, on the south side of the site, you'll see this existing Centerville Community Park. And then this area over here is the grass play fields from Washington High School. And you see the varsity baseball field there. So we're talking about the 9.6 acres. The city park will be 5.0 acres. And what's allocated for the school is 4.6 acres. So it's a relatively small site in terms of for an elementary school. And so our work began February, March, and April of 2018 with the school district on this project. And our task back at that time was to, to look at the 4.6 acres available for the school and to just do a quick study as to, to determine, you know, can we fit a school, an elementary school that can accommodate up to 750 students? And if we can, what might that look like? And develop a couple of options. So you'll see there's three options on the white and black side. We presented these three options to the community information being similar to this. It was in May of 2018, as John mentioned, and it was in the gym. So some of you may have been there. You probably won't recognize this slide because it's been so long ago. But those are the three images that we shared at that time. Since that time, the district has asked us to consider a fourth option, okay? And the fourth option is really based on the design of Lidle Brinkhurst Elementary School, which is in the warm springs community. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with that project. It's nearing completion. There's probably a few more months of final punch list work that remains to be done. But if you can drive around the site and see what that school and the park look like right now. So I have a slide of that site. And so it's interestingly similar in terms of the size of the land available and the configuration of the property. At Lidle Brinkhurst, this is a, it's a nine acre site. So it's a little bit smaller total in totality. The school over here, you can see there's a little red dash line that divides. This is the property line that divides the school property from the park property. At Lidle Brinkhurst, the school was five acres. So a little bit more than what the Williams property offers. And the park is four acres, a little bit smaller than what Williams property offers. So you can see how the layout of the school works through the parking lot. Up in the front of the school here, that picture, the two outdoor courtyard plaza. On one side of that is the, the school administration building and the TK and the kindergarten classrooms. If you were to go straight to the plaza, you end up at the multi-use building, which includes a large multi-use room, the service areas. There's a stage and some PE activity classrooms, as well as bathrooms and service spaces. Four of the multi-use buildings. Outside of the multi-use building, there's a large outdoor eating area for Washington. And that kind of borders on a courtyard that can accommodate the entire school. It's got a lot of flexible outdoor seating and learning areas and outdoor stage. And that's surrounded by two stories. These two buildings here are two-story buildings on this campus that are primarily classrooms, the library, the media center, innovation hubs, collaboration rooms, and that. So that's the, that's the Lidle Brinkhurst site. There's park paved playgrounds here that opens up into the park. You don't notice that you're going from school to park. There's no fence that divides the two, it's open and contiguous. All of the entire site is, can be fenced in and closed.
So if you have an opportunity to go over to this park site and see it, it would be interesting because you're gonna see something that'll give you a very similar look of what you have now. And so you have things like you have two play areas, one that's on basically the school property, one that's on the park property. However, when you're accessing the park, you can access the whole entire site. So you have basketball courts, handball courts, or an outdoor kind of terrace seating area, classroom space, perimeter trail, an open meadow. There is a restroom there, but the restroom is actually fenced out of the school property. So it's not accessible to students during the day. So if you have a chance to look at it, we have a couple of pictures here. We'll show you the kinds of amenities that we're looking at. Although we haven't had an opportunity to add a few more amenities because there's a little bit more space for the school park we're doing here. Yes?
Where is it actually located?
So this is Grimmer Boulevard. It's like the new developments going on, you know, where they're building the new bar station. So this is Grimmer Boulevard. They're like new street names, like Discovery Road and such like that. But if you, you see where that new bar station's going up in the warm springs area, go by.
It's right just north of the Tesla now. And if you drive out that way, you'll see there's a tremendous amount of new construction going on, multi-story residential, no recent commercial. There's three major developers that are building that entire area. The school kind of sits in the, in the middle of all that activity.
So it's kind of nice because you get to say, oh, I like this, I like that, you know? Kind of a dry run.
It's across the street from Solitide 3 and Grimmer Boulevard.
I know that.
Okay, all right, yeah. Everybody's like, what can they say? Was there was a question in the bathroom, did that answer?
I was just gonna say that the Tesla's to the right of this.
Yes.
Right, the Tesla lane is this right over just across the street. So these are three, we took three quick images of the school. As I mentioned, it's still under construction. There's not a lot of landscaping and things like that. And obviously, no people. It's a very contemporary design. The school is meant to be a hub for this new community that's being built. The contemporary design fits in really well with the architecture of all the adjacent residential and commercial buildings that are going in. School is very energy efficient, all the lighting and mechanical systems, the plumbing is all overflow water and the landscaping as well. Takes advantage of a lot of drug tolerance landscaping, as well as bio retention and stormwater retention areas. The image on top of it is of the main administration building, which is off the parking lot. The top right there is the student outdoor eating area. And if you, the bottom slide is of the same courtyard facing a different direction. And it shows the entry into the two-story classroom building in the library and the media center in there as well.
So this is sort of, the kind of things will be that are out at the existing park or the under construction park that will probably be bringing to your park. We'll be looking at two play areas that will sort of complement the existing play area already in the park, but add some new kind of activities to it. Areas that have some shade and some picnic tables that, near the tennis court areas or near the play areas, so parents can sort of be in the shade and watch the kids playing. Perimeter walking trails that I understand is really popular activity in this area. And open lawn and such, all just, it's like a beautiful park. And it's kind of fun when you get to cool resources, you know, to public agency to create something beautiful.
Okay, so we, as part of this fourth option, we've added a Lidle Brinkhurst design elements and we put them into the Williamson property. And instead of the park and the school being side by side, you've got a school on public park in this site. And that just responds to the, the site parameters. The school itself reoriented everybody to this integrity area. So the front of the school is on Eggers. Hastings Street is over here. 4.6 acres for the school property and then five acres. It's actually a little bit more than five acres. We've expanded down to the existing fences at the tennis courts and ball fields. A little bit more than five acres in totality for the, for the park side. The school on here is designed to accommodate up to 750 students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade. And coordinate with a lot of coordination in here. This, we didn't work in a vacuum on this. We haven't had a lot of community input, but we've had some programming meetings with the school district to identify and confirm that the spacing that are included in the school plan meet the needs, their educational program needs in terms of quantity, as well as sizes and locations and adjacencies with one another. We've had multiple coordination meetings with the city, both in terms of just responsibilities, project schedules, milestone days, things like that. We've also had meetings with the city to talk about the park, specifically some of the design elements in that area of the park. We've met with the fireworks shop as well. There are some fire lanes that are coming here. It's really important that the fire emergency vehicle access can make it to every part of every building, particularly the two-story classroom buildings that get a little bit tricky here. So we've met with the local fire marshal to make sure that he's comfortable with this plan as we move forward and we don't have, we don't have any, any major issues that will impact us on later. And then we've also met with the traffic engineer to talk about neighborhood traffic. When we did the community meeting back in May of 2018, I think that was probably one of the biggest concerns about the neighborhood is how is traffic going to be handled?
You said that the opening is gonna be on Eggers?
I'll walk you through how this lays out. The front of the school, this is Eggers on the top here. This is the front of the school. Parking lot is off of Eggers. So you can enter the parking lot over here. There's a one-way drop-off lane here that faces at the corner of Eggers. And there's an intersection, I'm not sure what that street name is.
Camden.
Camden.
That's our street that we live on. And I have to say that at 7:30 in the morning to 8:00, we cannot get out of our driveway. And that's now.
Yeah, that's the trouble.
We're gonna make more traffic going that way?
No, cannot. That's the trouble. I live in there.
Yeah, you can't do it.
I live in that way.
You have never asked us of what we traffic?
You better go there, I need money.
Go there in the morning to get a call from the general. You go there.
You go there, and a lot of you.
You go there and see the traffic.
So, so the purpose of this meeting is to get your feedback.
Well, that's why you.
Cannot go that way, I live in there.
And another component of this that we don't have yet, but the school district has hired a traffic consultant to look at all of these issues and help devise a plan.
And, and all that also includes the junior high school people. They're going to school at the same time as these people here at the school. It is gridlock, going down Calata, turning into Camden. I've been living on that street for 40 years and I've never seen the traffic this bad. Never.
Hold on, if I can just, because I think we should just get through the entire slideshow and then we're gonna just have all your input at once. Because I think perhaps some of the questions might get answered through the presentation. We'll just go through it pretty quickly and get you to the place where you can give us the feedback. We definitely know that there are concerns and so we do want to hear it. But I also want to make sure that you guys can get through the material first. Okay, so let's do that and then we'll do questions at the end, or comments.
Okay, so I'll walk you through. Here's, here's the way that this plan lays out is that the front of the school is on Eggers entrance and then Eggers is at the intersection there. This parking lot has a lot more parking than the Lidle Brinkhurst school has. And the drop-off lane is much longer than what Lidle Brinkhurst has for the 1100 student school. This school has less stairs, but it's got more parking and a longer drop-off lane. It's very similar residential Lidle Brinkhurst. You can enter into an outdoor courtyard here, an entry courtyard that intersects the avenue and the kindergarten classroom over here. There's a private kindergarten playing area here for the smaller kids. If you go straight through this entry courtyard, you come back to the multi-use building that we're proposing to have, keep it the same as what's at Lidle Brinkhurst. And then if you go right here, again, it's the two-story classroom buildings that surround an outdoor courtyard with some outdoor classroom spaces, flexible seating, outdoor space, things like that. Working your way through the campus up this way is where the park or play areas are, which leads into the parkers. And there's no fence between the school and the park there. It's open to one another, so you wouldn't notice that they're actually two different sites.
So I think this is working now. So once again, the elements make the online that divides this is the school property from the park property. When you're out in the real, in reality, there would be no dividing sign there. It would be open. So thinking about how you might access the school, one of the things we're looking at is to come down Hastings. We'll also have an entry to the school from outside. So the emergency vehicle access will all be supposedly designed with a pedestrian aid that will encourage people to move into the school that way. Before school hours, you can move into the school from the park on this direction. The idea being to disperse to the extent possible ways people can access the park. Also, we're looking at on the high school property, creating a sort of a parking area that can be the kindergarten here, so they can come in and pull in and enter directly into the kindergarten play area. It's that user group often has very good needs and sort of kids getting out of parks together. So the extent possible, even the way people arrive inside, we're trying to disperse it and think about those different groups, not compound a problem that you anticipated. The kinds of use here that we're talking about, this is the outdoor. It's really sort of that outdoor stage classroom space, not really planned for a management or anything like that. We, I mentioned we were able to add some activities here to the downtown Lidle Brinkhurst. We're looking at bringing in sort of box courts and shade area and a restroom here. So it's sort of interesting, whereas this is sort of the, now the edge of the block would have been the property, but we're sort of creating this interesting shape because we want two to blend in to each other. So people can enter to the park from here. We already have an existing tennis court. We're using that as an edge, existing fence around the ball field. So it really feels like this all is one place, not a series of different phases and such. Do you want to take, do you want to stop me right this minute?
I think we're gonna go through the whole thing and then.
Yeah. I'm just ignoring you, I'm just like, I'm just going to. So this is the existing ball field. So once again, we have the basketball courts. We're sort of activating existing paths and merging the, the existing park to this facility. So that once again, as a community, you will feel that you not only have additional park space that's on the school property, you can still have the park too, to go and sort of address that. I'm gonna go over to the next. Okay, you can go to the next slide.
Okay, the next slide fits a little bit more of the traffic issue and access to the site. This plan here shows in its, it's a high technical enrollment boundary. And the main arteries or perimeters of this is on the, on the south is Maury. Fremont Boulevard on the east. And it goes all the way to Walton on the north and then the Seale boundary on the, on the east side. The school site is the red angular area or square. This is Washington High School over here and Centerville, Centerville?
Yeah.
Yeah, Centerville High School over here. And so, you know, obviously, there's gonna be a push to try and get kids who live closer to the school to either walk or bicycle and not drive. And it's a little bit of a hurdle on this plan. And you can see from in the back there that these areas that are, you know, closer around this school here are areas that certainly students would be encouraged not to drive to school, but to walk or cycle. The areas are a little bit further away here, certainly most likely that the kids are gonna be driven to school. And the next slide here shows how roots to the school can be either encouraged or discouraged. And so the plan would be to encourage traffic to the school site to come not from the west Washington High School site, but from the east and the north and approach the school from the northeast corner. And dissuade traffic from coming down Fremont and maybe up there and passing Washington, because we know that Eggers gets really congested with traffic and drop-off pickup cars.
So how, so you can encourage, but how do you force that? I mean, in the urban world, I mean, you'd be great if people were kind of on the other side, but the reality of it is, is that they're not going to.
Well, there could be changes made to signage and intersections and things like that. We'll, you know, the city will be.
I mean, I do want to say something really quickly. You know, and I bet the same thing here. I live at the intersection of, just by House Street here, of Fabian and Eggers. So that, I mean, I wanna go to work. Good luck getting out. But it's okay, I understand why you're doing the show. The interesting thing is that three options that you showed all have parking on Eggers. There's not even an option at Hastings or, and I'm wondering why, because it might help. Because the thing about Washington, I have kids who go here, but I've been here for 19 years as well in the area. And is that they have the areas where they're, you know, on the Maury side, when it's a Fremont side and country, they have signs that say, no pickup and drop off. So all pickup and drop offs tend to take place on Eggers. And that's the problem, driving everybody to that area, so it becomes a cluster all the morning. And I just think it's not really gonna cause just a huge pain point for everybody, but it's gonna cause a lot of just frustration and anger and. I mean, I just think it's gonna create a big problem when you start adding this into the mix. So maybe even just thinking about the Hastings.
We have thought about it, and this is my last slide. I'll go through it quick and then we can go into the questions and answers. And then as part of that, I'll go back to the, the three options. Because we didn't consider parking and egress and exiting from Hastings. So that's where we've been. Our next steps are to, you know, obviously, listen to what we hear tonight and respond as appropriate to the comments received. We have to continue working with Fremont Unified with regards to the programming and the design of the school. We'll continue working with the city with regards to the design of the park. And our plan is to complete the conceptual design in the next few weeks. And then we move into the production of the drawings and the specifications. The, there's milestone dates in the conveyance agreement that we're, that we're obligated to hit. And the biggest one is that the school has to be open in fall of 2023. So my work backwards from there, leaving about 18 months for construction. From now until a year from now, we'll be just working on the design phases and getting the products submitted to the state architect's office, who is the, the, the plan reviewer. And that process takes about six to eight months. So at the earliest, the project would go out to bid in the summer of 2021. Is that right? And then probably start construction late summer, early fall of 2021 and go for 18 months. The park doesn't take nearly as long as the construction of the school. So we're showing on this calendar here or this chart trigger that the design, or the bidding of the park would start in fall of 2022 and finish at the same time as the school would finish about April or May of 2023. The school, the district would have the summer to move in all the computers, get the technology working, get the furniture to install and be ready for school. 2023. So, question, and if I could talk, I can answer yours first. I have to go back a few slides here. So there's one. Thank you for coming. So there's one of these slides, the one, one of the ones that we did look at. It gets to be traffic, from my experience, traffic gets to be really congested where you've got intersections and driveways that don't line up with one another, where you've got offset intersections. So we tried very hard to avoid that. If we wanted to have the, the in and out for the parking lot on Hastings, it would be in a very, it would be a very tight, so the drop-off lane would be extremely small. You would have, and, and, sorry about that. You would have the, the, I'm here, we're showing the in at the corner of Camden and Eggers. But if you wanted to have it all along Hastings here, it would be. You both agree with that? This is what this plan shows, the in here wraps around and comes out on Hastings. This was one option. How do you both in and out along Hastings? You would have, you have the driveway very close to the intersection here, and you have exit very close to the intersection here. We felt like that, that was probably not an ideal solution. Certainly not as good as having the frontage on Agers where we can expand the parking lot, have more parking and separate the driveways for in.
So rather than having, rather than having close, entering close to the intersection, why can't you build from the back coming in, so you're not close to intersection, but both on Hastings, right? So you enter from the Hastings, come back, and so you just need to build an extra road going from there. On the back. Where the park is, right, trying to merge the park and the school by that location.
I'm not sure whether it's all yours, you're suggesting by having a front on Hastings? We're kind of limited too by the configuration of the site. We can't adjust it.
Extra from here and coming back all the way here and from this side out. Or directly here.
To create all park and all Hastings.
And it's only one way, and you can...
To create all park and all Hastings.
Right, and that's, we did look at that as one option. And we thought that the driveway into the parking lot would be too close to this intersection. You think that if you've got a driveway and an intersection so close to one another, that's where you really start to get congested, because people back up coming into the parking lot perhaps in the morning or pick up, you know, people like to stack up. And if you have that so close to an intersection, I think that...
So I have two recommendations and one job to work with the school here to create a different, a different option for their pickup and drop off, because again, there's a question. Because if there's any pressure, there are the old neighbors. So we kind of, it's also a result of the high school parking, which is not just parking. It's also for just drop and drop off. And then people to the legal, they drop their kids up, and they give them legal U-turns right in the middle of the street. So that's one way. You can either do that, or maybe you have some traffic, you know, folks that are helping to just direct traffic on the morning going through. If you want to walk the kids across crosswalk, whatever the case may be. Putting that parking on Agers is going to be a nightmare. It is going to be a nightmare. I'm just putting that out there.
You can go, you can...
It's like a deep drive.
I live on the Seale Parkway between Agers and Country Drive. And notice in the morning, a tremendous amount of traffic comes down to the Seale Parkway, turns right on Agers and goes down Agers to Fremont Boulevard. And it's just bumper-to-bumper traffic. They're taking a shortcut rather than using Mallory, they're using Agers.
Okay, and John, do you want to talk about the traffic engineers' timeline? We do have, the district does have a traffic engineer who's looking, and they look at all of these kinds of scenarios and who's coming and going, how many cars are traveling down these streets, and will be able to make recommendations for how to best accommodate.
And also keep in mind, Fabian is a private street. So you've got to take that into consideration too, that if you're starting to get people to start directing people to pull into there, turn around, or park here, whatever the case may be, it's a private street. So, you know, that's going to create a big problem.
I can just leave the Ager drive quick, you can put in the ambulance, something like that. Cannot do that. Having the Ager in the morning, that through the Ager drive, the traffic is way bad. That cannot be difficult. People in Ager drive cannot. Last time evening in the city hall, we did talk about this. Talk about, again, in there. You can go there in the morning, see what's the traffic in there, in the Ager drive. I have written a second.
I'll have us wait for this stuff.
I live on Agers, almost the same, and I've lived there for thirty years. And I've noticed something that when there's cars parked on the street in front of a house, on both sides of the street, it only allows for one lane going each way. If you were to put a red curb there or something, so people couldn't park on the street in front of their house, that lets two lanes of traffic, and the problem almost disappears. When there's cars there, they back up from Seale Parkway all the way to Washington High School. When there's no cars there, there's two lanes, one's turning right on the Seale Parkway, and one's turning left on the Seale Parkway. The traffic would be much better.
Hi, my name is Abby, and I'm a school board trustee. So thank you all for coming out and giving your input. I will say that my kids, some of them attended to Washington High School. So I appreciate what you're saying about the traffic. I think one of the challenges we have with Washington High School is that we have people who attend the school who are on that side of Seale Padre, and people who are coming from on the other side of Fremont Boulevard. So if you're coming from Fremont Boulevard, I believe that people come in through Agers, and then that's where you have that heading. For myself, I live off of Peralta, so we used to come down to Country. The challenge with Country is that it's very difficult, if you're heading towards the hill, to stop and let kids off, whereas on the other side of the street, it's much easier. And so it may be that there's a way to park it at the city to make that side a little bit easier, because it's a much wider roadway. So if we're able to do more with Washington High School on that side of the street, maybe that's a response. But I want to make it really clear, reiterate, we are very aware of the traffic issues, and we are doing a traffic study, and we want to make sure that we're sensitive to our neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. I think that this is going to be a wonderful asset once it's built. But I do understand that there are people who are in the neighborhood, and it's going to inconvenience if we don't park properly as well. So thank you.
About my... So I actually certainly doubt that this is something that is needed, is considered in the next, for the moment, and so we call that overload and what we've probably referred to it. So that's not, that's not my question. We all, you know, at least myself, I think it's definitely needed. I think if you talk to anybody at Hartman Village Green across the way, the 235 minute complex, you're going to hear personal stories about how nightmarish the traffic is. So I would appreciate it, even though you're getting this traffic study, if you was the architect, come out and spend the morning with us.
Yes. Grab up that, you're a mom.
And check it out, and see what we're talking about. Meet with the board of the HOA, hear us out, and let's give, let's give some input.
Happy to do it.
And then also, I don't see a chocolate bar.
We do have, we do have a spot for that. And I can tell you that inside the multi-story building, there's two PE rooms here. For an eleven hundred student school, you need two PE rooms. For a seven hundred and fifty school, student school, you need one. But since we're trying to reuse the design of L.A. Rangers, one of these two PE rooms could be a good opportunity for before and after-school care. It's a great location off of the play areas, by the food service, and easy access to the upfront of the school.
Is it accessible to bathrooms?
Bathrooms are, this could be one of the extended rooms, and the bathrooms are right here.
Could you possibly consult with one of the office school programs agreement to take a look at what you're talking about, to get a look at that?
Yeah, we're not close to that, that level of detail.
Yes, as I was saying, I've lived on Camden Street for four years, and the traffic has never been so bad in the last five years than it is. And there is, there is crosswalks on both of the streets there, the corners. But they, the people who go there, that go there, they just zoom right through. They don't care about the signs there, because I've only, I take my granddaughter for a stroll like three times a week. And the crosswalks and stuff, I've always been, I've almost been one over twice. The people do not stop when they're in crosswalk, they just go. So it's also the speed limit there, the speed limit. I've asked, we've gone down to the city and asked them to put speed bumps or do something harsh, meaning that's supposed to be twenty-five miles an hour. People don't ever go twenty-five miles an hour on that street. There's a quick stop there, so they can go whatever, whatever speed they want. And it's like, okay, during lunchtime, the kids from Washington High School, they come out of that, what is that, across the street? They go to the quick stop, they go, they come out of that, out of that Hartman complex, or yes. And there, they're going across the street, there's nothing there, and there's just cars over by, and there's going to be an accident there one day, and someone's going to get killed. Then new people will do something about it. But until there, no. We've asked plenty of times, and no one's, they don't even have a sign posted there that says twenty-five miles an hour. They don't even have a sign. No one cares about that street. No one does. And that's really, I mean, this school may be a client for at least for younger people, but it's not going to do anything for me or my young grandchildren, because they're never going to go there. So, I mean, why should I go for something like this? Okay? Do you actually have the money to do this? Because I've heard that you don't have money to do this. Or are you waiting for another bill to go through that won that pay for this?
I can answer some of those questions. We don't have all the answers at this time. However, from a traffic perspective, part of the traffic study is to, number one, examine what the effect is, or what the effect could be, based on the enrollment and based on the times of day. So there's going to be studies, they're going to look at the times of day, that the impact is the highest and the lowest. Mitigation factors are going to be recommended through this whole process. Now, we don't know which ones are going to be instigated or what yet. However, one of them is traffic control with people, with signs, the crossing guards and other things. Others are signage on the streets, such as dissuading traffic to go in the eastbound direction on Agers at certain times of the day. Others could be an additional drop-off area on Hastings, which is next to the school as well. In fact, I gotta use this thing again, because I have to use it now. But right there, and on Hastings right here, can also be, can also be an additional drop-off area. This over here could be another secondary entrance to the school right here. Now, we do recognize that there is going to be a traffic impact. We're going to do everything we can to come up with different solutions and options to least impact this area. So, the other thing, what was the other thing you mentioned? The dollar value, where's the money coming from? Currently, we have the land conveyance agreement, which is the agreement that is, we're working toward to make this school happen. Now, yes, there is a factor that is unfunded currently. However, developer fees, different funds can be used, and it'll be up to the board to decide what other mechanisms can be used to fund this. One of which is, it probably will be a piecemeal type of approach, possibly a little bit of developer fees, possibly another fund, the sale-of-site funds, I'm not quite sure. But there's other factors too, which were in line for state funding and Prop 51 funding. Early next year in 2020, were in line for another three million dollars of funding. After that, within another year, were in line for another six million dollars. All in all, we're upwards of sixty-eight million dollars in eligibility that we have. Now granted, the state only has a certain amount of money, but where we are in the process, we are getting money. It's not enough, but it's something. And then there's also state bonds that's being floated currently as well. And so any of the projects that we've applied for and we're in line for that are unfunded can now be funded, should that bond pass.
And if I could just answer, we'll bring all these options to the board for approval within the next six to nine months, because that's what we have to do based on our timeline. So we're going to give the menu options to the board, and then the board can make a decision around how that funding model's going to work.
Really good of you to answer.
I have a question, which I think will help you answer a lot of concerns here. I was at the first meeting, and traffic was the big question, and it remains the question now. Can you just explain in this process, why did traffic study happen so late? You mentioned that it was going to be in January of 2020. And so I think a lot of people, and I do myself, since I was at that first meeting, traffic is a concern at the first meeting, it remains a concern. And I think that we're giving like, or, I know you're hearing this, but I feel like it shows that it wasn't heard. So I'm wondering why the traffic study comes so late? It kind of seems like we are past the point of doing something, and actually, do you think so?
Yeah. The traffic study has to follow the design of the school and the size of the school. Initially, the school size is going to be anywhere from seven hundred and fifty students to eleven hundred students. So logically, where we are now with the designs, the traffic study is in place for what we need. Could it have been done a few weeks or so earlier? Yes, it could, but we had to get the consultant, the secret consultant on board who has a traffic study in that process.
Why, if you have, though, before you do the designs, that's where it seems to would be most productive, before you even have these options?
You have to have the locations of the inlets, of the parking, the drop-offs, the layout of the school site, and we had to do meetings with the staff at the district to figure out from a programming point of view, how many classrooms, how many non-loaded stations, all sorts of things like that. So one thing we do know is we know we need to have onsite or onsite, off-street queuing, because when we go through the environmental impact report, we want to get as many cars off that street as possible. And so that's why there's a longer drop-off there, and a main parking area over here as well. We're trying to mitigate the impacts of the school, of what the school, if there's going to be impacts. We recognize that. We're going to explore every possibility we can to try to add secondary entrances and drop-off areas. We can time the school times, but we're exploring its opportunities as well. So one item, that's another topic, that I wanted to put, make sure that the traffic study and all considerations is around three sites. And instead of recent models, it has to require all high schools to move to after 8:30 AM start times. And that'd be, that'd be a huge impact, as the start time difference. The second thing is, I question that this is the best project, or the best way to solve our problems. A lot has changed here, and a lot will change. We're building up a very expensive proposition, and this is at a time when we are starting to see declining home. At a time when we are expanding all five of our junior high and middle schools, creating a ton of capacity. And at a time where we're having trouble filling our newest elementary school by L.A. Rangers. So I think, I think I have great concerns over the cost of this project, and that we could punch hard to invest those dollars in our existing schools and to create another elementary school that would also be an operational cost. And actually, what my question is, like, what if the estimate costs this project? Currently, it's a estimate in the eighteen million dollar budget cost, but we'll be exploring opportunities to lessen that. In fact, one of those cost indicators is to reuse L.A. Rangers plans as much as possible, which saves on schedule, saves on architecture, and things like that. We will be exploring, with the facilities advisory committee and the board, opportunities for other ways of reducing capacity, if we have an overcapacity within the district. And so one of which of those is to remove the temporary portables, which are leased, and they're a constant cost. We have seventy-eight of those. And so we can clear the process, looking at how can we best lessen the capacity and... how can we best lessen the, the capacity and, and the apparent overcapacity of the district, should the, the demographics drop? But the demographics are cyclical, and, and yes, we just recently got site-by-site, um, capacity numbers literally this week. We're digesting them now, we'll be sharing them with the Facilities Advisory Committee and with the board subsequently. So, we have a lot of work that we need to do still.
Yeah, I, um, I've been watching, been here for a very long time. When we first went here, I had to drive to Camden and bring my bulldozer, it was a dirt road, it was a very long. So I've watched the evolution, I, I walked, I rode my bike to Parkmont, I walked on my bike to Central Elementary and Washington High School. So we read the, and watched the evolution track. Um, one of these hasn't been considered here, which would potentially be a part of the problem for Washington and this, is to take away some of the curving and add another lane, and it could be used for drop-off of Washington and this. Combinators, combinator drive, uh, the school side of it. Generally, you're talking about playing red line first, can't, can't do that with people who've been here four years of running the property. But that whole side of it is, 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 uh, up for grabs. And the, and the other problem is that ridiculous traffic circle. I mean, I spent 16 years in the UK and I've traffic circle works, and that's not how it's supposed to work. Um, when my father told me to put, put it in there, I had to laugh because I was, to sell tickets, watch the car moving. And, and that's what's happened with it, so it stops it, and people put the thing in there, nobody had a use of it. And so, now it's just an obstacle in the middle of the road. If you ran buses and a lot of traffic going in there, that traffic circle is in the middle. Unless you're gonna put it back the way it was, which will help traffic flow, that's the purpose of this, is to allow traffic. And so people won't have to stop and go, stop and go, they can come up and it's clear, if, if nobody was on the street. So, I, and my suggestion is to, to drop it out clearly, through the way. You could also do the same thing in my Hastings, take a little bit of, take a little sidewalk, push it a little closer, that would give you, um, an extra lane, the people could stop in. Because right now, somebody said, you've got that school park lane, how do they get out of there? There's nobody get out. You're right, I'm talking about down, down on base, which is a problem.
And, and the intent is not that you pull in there, that's just a, 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 a smaller secondary entrance, where cars, parents can drop kids off along Hastings.
Right, but that's gonna block off, that's gonna be blocking off half the road, that's why I'm saying if you put a lane in there.
Right, and, and we.
Leave the two, leave the traffic.
We could do a little turnout lane, our kid, cars can pull off of the street and drop their kids off in the, you know, the, the, the bigger kids especially can come in from that backside there. They can also be dropped off at the parking lot, which is not shown on this plan, but it's the existing parking lot at the, at the park site, where the older kids, they can get dropped off in that parking lot, and there's an easy pathway to walk through the park to come to the back of the school. So we've tried, in this plan, really hard to disperse the traffic so that it's not all focused in one parking lot area. And we've done that by the, the parking lot, which is a gravel or dirt lot behind the baseball field right now. I think it's used primarily just for baseball probably. Um, we could get a fair amount of parking spaces in there that could be used for the parents that drop off the, the kindergarteners, as well as perhaps staff parking. Um, you've got the larger parking lot with more parking there, and then also taking advantage of Hastings and the drop-off opportunities on Hastings and the parking lot that's in the park.
Because I've, I've watched over the years, all, all schools in Fremont, they're eating down on this road. Um, just the mad access becomes a morning, it's all traffic. In this area, both currents are working, so they're, they're taking the kids to school, you know, or the drop-off before they go to work. So it's just, they never used to do that without school.
Hey, your first law, your second one you said, what you just said about adding a little curve out in Hastings, you said exactly what I said at the point, so thank you for supporting me on that. Um, and what I can say to answer to Mr. Get Heart? Um, I moved here in 1996, my very first time, I went to Parkmont with my kindergarten in the air, and I said, you know, I'm here, I'm heading to my kindergarten, and I was told I couldn't be over lived. Very first day, 1996. So, that has not changed, no matter, even as we're going to middle school, so we're pulling our sixth graders off to a different school, and we're having a lot more, um, space on our elementary schools, Parkmont continues to have almost twice as many students as any other school. And if you're seeing Parkmont, if you're seeing a lot of traffic in your neighborhood, there are families in your neighborhood that have to drive across, um, to Sayopodra to get their kids to Parkmont. So that's some of the parts, isn't all the parts available? And I, I am absolutely not saying it is, but if with this school, more kids will be able to walk to school, and so we wanna see that happen, for one, it's a healthy habit. We do wanna make it safe, so I did hear what you were saying. I'll tell you, um, in the past, there has been a lot of frustration with the city as far as suppressing some of the traffic, we, here doing a really strong job right now, we own the job, to make sure that our streets, the streets are safe. So if you called them before and didn't get a response, I encourage you to call them again. I've done that, and I've seen how it's gone. So I'm hopeful that we, in our partnership with them, that we need to make them safer.
My question is that the, the traffic map, the, 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 the current get early from parks are everywhere, it's on the street, and they, they won't let, they won't, basically, the street and the parks, that hopefully, you consider that adding some of the pick-ups. But my real question is, have you considered that enrollment pattern?
The enrollment area?
We are exploring that currently. Um, in the mitigation agreement, this, uh, lady's school site is to go to the candidate attendance area, um, to balance that out, to, uh, uh, lessen the load of the impact on Parkmont, or excuse me. Um, is it Parkmont, or is it, it's?
Parkmont.
Sorry, it is Parkmont, I guess it's Parkmont. Parkmont is very overcrowded, um, it's over a thousand students in the neighborhood. And so, what we have proposed to do, one of our studies that we'll do, is take off a little piece of the other, um, elementary attendance areas. We'll have a demographer look at that. Um, we're currently looking at it at the Facilities Advisory Committee, um, which means once a month, the first Wednesday, the first Thursday of, um, uh, this for the next few months. So you're welcome to attend, it's open to the public, um, and it's at 7:30 on Thursday night. So, we will be discussing, um, the boundary, uh, possibilities, which includes this school site, but also district-wide, um, as well. So, so there is gonna be a lot of discussion on that, and that's what I know right now.
How are we going to secure this school, especially on the left side? How are we going to secure it?
How is it going to be secure?
I don't have a microphone, but I'm gonna talk really loud.
You do?
Oh, yeah. So, there is a fence that is around the school that will connect into some of the existing fences that exist already in the park, and where there's not a fence, a new fence will be added. So the idea is that during school hours, when school is in operation, this part of the park will not be available to the public, and then when school is out of session or on weekends, it's available to the public. So during school hours, the, the, it will be clear that the public is not supposed to be here.
I might have missed something in the beginning. I hear you're designing how we can get accessible to the school during the day and park for your children. Um, and the, what if the park is, in traditional schools, makes up the playground area for most of the schools? Um, did I miss why we're, um, using that particular kind of plan on the area of Centralville Park over here? Do you need more park area?
Um, I can't answer the question of your need for more park area, although I, I know as Fremont is growing, there, there always is need for more park land. So, in general, I would say, I'm pretty comfortable saying that the city needs more park land. And then the idea would be that you would add, like, originally when this park was designed, like, I know there was an idea for bocce courts, they couldn't do it at that time, they wanna add them in. So, it's that kind of, the, sort of, the co-mingling of two public agencies to have mutual benefit. The idea that you wouldn't want schools that were not accessible during the day, that the public has both benefit there. But in general, in terms of the need for park land, I don't know. Roger, I assume you got, the, the city of Fremont needs more parks too. I mean, there's, there's a need for that.
There is a need for park, this was, it's been tenured for park. Um, where the configuration of the school and the park were set by the state legislature, um, through legislation, which is why granted 4.6 acres to the school. So we're kind of bound by that rectangle shape at the top of the school.
Do you have a problem? Well, okay, so that was the part that I was trying to get at about why this particular configuration? Because it seems like we're really trying to squeeze too much school into too little of a space. Actually, um, we've been here for 30 years, and my children went to all the schools and went to Parkmont, um, and crossed the Sayopodra. Uh, and so I like the idea of having a smaller local, little elementary school, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I, um, act, you know, sympathetic to, uh, the congestion they caused. I'm just gonna tell you that I'm also a school bus driver, so I'm really sympathetic. I'm not seeing any space for school buses in there to keep them segregated. So, which is why I asked about why this, this particular configuration? Because if there was more leeway using that old 9.6 acres, give or take, it would give you a lot more room to accommodate the traffic problems that you have. As you would, but not happy to go.
Yeah, we are bound by the legislation and the way that it was written, so we don't have a whole lot of flexibility, unfortunately.
There's no way to really address that with the state?
We would have to bring it back and get it re-approved by the governor, so, yeah.
Well.
It can't, it, it, it is possible, yes.
Is, is there someone that hasn't asked a question yet, that, uh, would like to go before we?
Yeah, we are at time, and I wanna respect the first time, but I also don't wanna cut people off, so we can always say a little bit afterwards too.
So, for those of you who came late, Diane Jones and Trustee as well, I just want to thank all of you for coming, this kind of community engagement is exactly what we need. And we are hearing all of the concerns that you can raise, for sure. And just so you know, my own kids were Parkmont Central Washington, so I'm really familiar with the issues that you're all talking about. I just wanna thank you again for coming, please keep coming, stay engaged.
The important is, the traffic question I raised in the city hall meeting last time, the same, the same thing happened again. The same thing happened, I'm talking about the Egger Drive, in the past, last meeting in city hall.
Uh, one more thing I have to talk to you. High school students who drive, right? And you're putting the young ones in the same square as they drive their cars, and generally it's statistics show that they are more dangerous drivers.
Yeah, but they're driving, I'll drive my country, that's what it's still working like.
It's not that far, I've seen a lot of high school drivers forty-one acres as well. Yeah, so you're putting the young ones against most riskiest drivers.
Um, I have two questions, one, I just wanted to know whether the process kind of happens eight, nine days later? Like, not nine days later, but, um.
Will it, will we complete it? Will you have a say, well, so it's, it's happening in January, how long is the timeframe for it?
Well, it's, it's, it's going to be a process and very short period of time, but it will, I, the, my understanding is that it's gonna be, having results in January timeframe. So, from there, we will be, there'll be some mitigation measures that are identified, and we're gonna be taking all of your comments, um, at hand. There's also going to be multiple times that this will be out in the public, we'll have board meetings that'll be discussing this. We also have an environmental impact report, which has a hearing, public hearing, and there's also a 30-day period where there's public comment period, and everybody in the area will be noticed. Um, and so, that timeframe, if I'm not mistaken, is in the March timeframe, that we're looking at a board meeting with a March, February-March timeframe for a public hearing, uh, which is the draft environmental impact report. So, there's more to this, and we will be in the public and notifying you as much as possible.
Okay, I have one question, specifically to the traffic. I was just, you said you're, um, basically kind of regaining the other school, you know, for my Tesla, and I just look at the design, I can give him a comment, he describes it, you know, like, very modern. How's that really fit here?
It may not, and we will look at that, and it may involve some redesign to the exterior skin of the buildings and, and pulling back on the scale a little bit, so that, we want it to fit in and be a nice, uh, asset to the community and not look like a sore thumb.
Right, that's, that was my concern, because it is, it's an invisible neighborhood, and this school, it's something that's been around forever. Um, it had to be partially developed.
Yeah, so the design.
But we'll, we'll look at this school.
The design for the elementary school fits in beautifully with, with the surrounding architecture. It may not fit in here, um, and, and where we will be redesigning. Even though we'll try and reuse the plans, there will be some changes that may, needed to make it fit into this neighborhood. I mean, it looks like white.
Okay, I just, this is kind of, I think, I just ask something not to get to traffic, um, but just to keep me with the, tell me the whole, you know, the, the design, but I think that's really a question. Because I, I walk from the start every day with the dog, and usually got grand view of Mission Peak, and, it's actually, even though it's a kind of cradle field, it's very cast. Um, if you know what this lady's trash is, you're still in there. It's actually, there's a beautiful, I don't know, a tree, but it's a beautiful, it's an old tree. I, I think you know when I'm talking about the frontiers. Can there be some preservation of some of the existing nature? Maybe that's in, um, the environmental, we can just discuss that, but, I think it would make those of us who are struggling and having this push on us, just feel like, okay, at least there's something remaining of what it used to be, so that's very, you know.
I can respond a little bit to that, because, yes, and I just learned that it was an old nursery, that's why, uh, Dr. Seuss tree is, I've heard it's there and such. Yeah, and so that's one of the things we'll be looking at as we start getting grades, which ones are potentially safe, which ones have enough life left in them to save too? Because some of the pines are in, in, you're in the end of their life cycle, so. But that's the kind of thing that, obviously, if anything that makes sense, then we'll do that. Some of them may not make sense, and then I'll say, no, put a new one in there, because it's a better investment. You know, like, we wanna plan for the long-term impact for you, as opposed to saving somebody's good dime in 10 years, and then there's no money to throw it back yet, so, yeah.
The one tree I think you're referring to is a bottle tree on Egger.
I think so. I, I don't know.
That's actually a sitting landmark, so it's actually too uniquely distinct.
Well, that's.
And the design, the, the design of it there around here should accommodate.
I wanna thank everybody again for coming, because we know that, and if, we'll, we'll take individual customs if people wanna come up, but I don't wanna hold the whole crowd, and people don't wanna stay and be able to get home to their lives. But, um, uh, this is very good input for us, and we know that there's very passionate thoughts and feelings around everything, and we're gonna do our best to make sure that we are able to get, um, your input on a continual basis. And you can also come to any of the other opportunities that we have for you, and so we'll stick around for a little while, if people wanna come up and chat with us.
Is this really a good deal, and we're just looking at the details?
So this is, this has been passed by legislation, so yes, this is, that we need to build the school by June of 2023, we're opening up in September, uh, August of 2023. Um, and we're moving down that path, and, uh, and the intention is to build the school. We have to do, we'll meet a lot of benchmarks in order to actually do that, but, uh, yes, that's the intention.